I would like to call the Monday, September 13th, Common Council Meeting to Order. Clerk Jones, I believe that you would like to make some comments regarding the length of this meeting and other expectations.
I'll continue with me, but I will say first. Good evening, members of the public. For those of you who are attending this meeting virtually, I would like for you to know that you are automatically muted for listening purposes and for audio purposes of the council and yourselves. And if you need to, or if you would like to speak during the meeting, during the time of the meeting, please insert your name and your address into the chat, and you will be called on at that time. If you would like to speak during privilege of the floor, again, please insert your name in the chat, and the council president will call on you. You have five minutes to speak.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. I would like to read the statement, disrespectful, rude, or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech and/or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in the individual without notice, losing the remaining of his or her time. At this time, I'm very happy to bring to the podium Pastor Matt Graybill of the South Bend City Church, who will give our invocation at this time. Pastor Graybill.
Thank you, Council, for the opportunity to give this invocation. Let's pray. Loving God, we pause this evening as an acknowledgement that we don't have all the answers. God, you are, you hold our world together, and because of that, we come to you now and surrender our time and our thoughts to you. And as we reflect on these days of our past, we don't want to forget the lives lost 20 years ago on September 11th. We honor their lives and pray for their families and the loss that continues to greet both them and our country. We also remember and pray for those who have served to keep us safe and out of harm's way. God, even today, as we think and pray for those who are serving in our hospitals, schools, in our communities, and overseas, especially during this pandemic. God, we've been reminded through this pandemic that life is precious, and so we thank you for the gift of life, breath, and the ability to make a difference in the lives of those around us. We thank you for being able to gather in person here today and to be able to use technology in this way to gather together. And so, God, we're keenly aware of the circumstances that occur in each of our lives and in our neighborhoods and in the cities that are beyond our control. But you, God, give us the ability to make choices and decisions. You give us the ability to surround ourselves with good people, and because of that, we come to unite, asking for wisdom, for the decisions that need to be made, strength to live those decisions out, and hope as we lay down our burdens. So, God, I pray tonight that you would give strength to those who need strengths, wisdom to those who need wisdom, patience to those who need patience, encouragement to those who need encouragement, joy to those who need joy, and peace to those who need peace. And above all, God, I pray that you would teach us how to love one another well, we pray. Amen.
Thank you for that invocation, Pastor Graybill. Will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Yes. Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Warner.
Here.
Councilmember Wax.
Present.
Councilmember Niskoski.
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
Vice President McBride.
Present.
President White.
Present.
Eight present. Thank you. Will now have the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes. Clerk Jones, will you please read the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes for the August 9th and August 23rd Council meetings? Yes. Report of Subcommittee's on Minutes. To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of August 9th, 2021, and August 23rd, 2001 meetings, and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Thank you. And now entertain a motion to accept the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes for the August 9th, 2021, and August 23rd, 2021 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Uh, Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you. Will now move to Special Business, a special resolution, Resolution, Special Resolution 21-15, 13. Clerk Jones, will you please read that Special Resolution? 21-45. 21-45. I'm having a problem reading without my glasses, so I'm gonna start wearing them. Okay, 21-45. A Special Resolution of the South Bend Common Council commemorating Brandon Williams and recognizing September 25th, 2021, as a National Day of Remembrance for Murder Victims. Thank you. We have three council members who will be reading into the record the Special Proclamation, starting out with Councilwoman Vice President Sharon McBride, followed by Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski.
Thank you, Chair, and President White. A Special Resolution Number 21-45 of the South Bend Common Council commemorating Brandon Williams and recognizing September 25th, 2021, as a National Day of Remembrance for Murder Victims. Whereas in 2007, the United States Congress designated September 25th as a National Day of Remembrance for Murder Victims, and whereas this National Day of Remembrance provides everyone the opportunity to remember those lost to murder and to honor their memories, and whereas this day also allows everyone to focus on the devastating impact of murder on families and communities, and to search for ways to support survivors. And whereas in South Bend, a mobile art display created by students and other artists who have been impacted by violence will be unveiled on the Day of Remembrance, and...
Whereas, whereas as special part of the Day of Remembrance, the Common Council commemorates the life of Brandon Williams, the only murder victim in a mass shooting at Kelly's Pub on June 23rd, 2019. Whereas, Brandon was born on May 20th, 1992, in Niles, Michigan, the son of Oscar Eric Ricky Williams, Sr., and Joanne Milliken. And whereas, at the time of his unnecessary death, Brandon left behind his parents, two siblings, Tiara Williams and Oscar Ricky Williams, Jr., his grandparents, his great-grandmother, and many other family members and friends. And whereas, Brandon was a member of Mount Calvary Church in Niles and volunteered when able at the Niles Ferry Street Resource Center to help the youth in his community. And whereas Brandon's many talents of being a creator, an artist, an entrepreneur, and generally a jack-of-all-trades were demonstrated by his producing music, rapping, tattooing, making shirts, working on cars, drawing and painting. And whereas Brandon is remembered by his community for helping others and having a smile and a laugh that would light up everyone's soul. And whereas Brandon is also remembered by his family for playing with his nieces and nephews, and for his love for holidays, especially the Fourth of July. And whereas unfortunately, Brandon is also remembered by those who did not have the privilege of knowing him, only for his untimely violent death.
Now therefore be it resolved by the South Bend Common Council as follows. The South Bend Common Council recognizes and declares September 25th, 2021, as a Day of Remembrance for Murder Victims. Section 2, the South Bend Common Council, to get together with Tiara Williams, Mae, Mary Louise Cosiff, Mamas Against Violence, Save, Stand Against Violence Every Day, the GVI Group Violence Intervention, the South Bend Community School Corporation, and the Office of the Mayor commemorates the lives of more than 134 crime victims killed over the past 10 years, including Brandon Williams. Section 3, may God grant peace to those victims and their families and friends. Sign and approve this 13-day of September 2021 in the city of South Bend, County of the St. Joseph, in the state of Indiana. Councilmembers, you do not have to vote on this special resolution, but I would ask if you would like to make any comments at this time, please feel free to do some. So, any comments from council members? Councilmember Hammond?
Thank you. I would like to thank the council members for bringing forth this special resolution, this very important recognition of a life that ended far too soon, and for the other losses of life that we have experienced in our community.
The other council members? Councilman Kenneth Lee?
Yes, I would also like to thank those on the council who are working so diligently to remember Brandon Williams and all of those victims that we have had through violence, through murder, through gun violence. I, I lost a sister to murder, and, you know, a family's life is changed when you get that call from the police, and, and it, we really never know the ripple or the effect that we have on people's lives. So, to remember these victims, to stand with these family members, and to, to acknowledge the fact that they existed, it means a lot. And so, thank you to the council members who put this together, and, and on September 25th, we are gonna have a great day of remembrance for those people.
Thank you. Are there any other council members who would like to make any comments? Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting in terms of the public wishing to make any comments? We have a person, Tiara Williams, has expressed an interest. Ms. Williams, if you would unmute yourself, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Tiara Williams. My address is Niles, Michigan. I am the sister of Brandon Williams. I was just wanting everybody to know the mass shooting date was June 23rd, not the 25th.
Thank you, Tiara. It is the 23rd in the resolution.
Okay.
So, if it was said incorrectly, then I would apologize for, if that was said, but it does reflect June the 23rd.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Clerk Jones, is there anyone else?
No, that exhausted our list.
Thank you. I appreciate the council member's support in regards to this special resolution, recognizing not only Brandon Williams, but also the other victims that lost their lives through murder. At this time, well, there's no reports from city offices. Entertain a motion? Ms. White?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
President White, if I may, at this time, I want to thank the cosponsors for this resolution, and also, along with us commemorating this day on September 25th, there will be an unveiling of the art gallery in the lobby of the County City Building at 1:00. And at 2:00, there will be a display of all of the homicide victims over the past 10 years at Howard Park at 2:00. And then, with the family, there would also be a dedication to Brandon Williams at Kelly's Pub as well. So, more information will be forthcoming. If the council members would like to be a part of that process and program, please get with me and let me know. And I just want to say thank you. We definitely do not want to miss anyone that was impacted, but being that the Kelly's Pub shooting was in the 3rd district, and I've been working diligently with the family for the past few years, we want to make sure that, that mass shooting did not go unnoticed as well. So, thank you, and I yield.
Thank you as well. Now, I would like to entertain a motion to resolve into the Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll? Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. The, oh yeah. The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is a portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading in public hearing. I wish to share with you that bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been given a first reading and set for a committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee, where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. We're gonna start with Bill Number 106-21. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 106-21 a second reading?
Yes. 106-21, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 2519 Pleasant Street.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. Bill 106-21 came before the Zoning and Annexation Committee this afternoon, and comes to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Is the petitioner present?
Good evening, Council. Joseph Molnar, Zoning Specialist, with offices on the 14th floor of the County City Building. Today before you is a special exception in a U1 district, which is predominantly a single-family district. This proposal is to construct a duplex, which requires the special exception from council. The location is 2519 East Pleasant Street. It's a vacant lot off Pleasant, a few blocks to the east of Ironwood. As you can see, the lot is currently vacant. Next door is a house that, as you can see in the picture here, in 2019, was under construction, and this is solidly in the South River Park portion of the neighborhood. Here is the demographics of the neighborhood over the past two decades. Like most of the city, during the 2000s, River Park lost quite a lot of households and a significant amount of population. We saw that bounce back slightly in the 2010 to 2020 period, but still not back to the 2000 level. Hopefully, that explains some of the vacant lots in the area. When River Park was first developed in the 1910s and 1920s, this section, it was legal to do small-scale multifamily, and so you see the results of that still to this day. The bright orange is U3, Urban Neighbourhood 3, and there are small-scale multifamily on the site, and there's also a duplex nearby as well. So, small-scale multifamily is not out of character with the area. This is the lot as it currently exists today. The petitioner actually resides in the house indicated to the right of the lot. The petitioner has indicated that they will follow all zoning regulations and setbacks, so front setback, side and rear will meet all current U1 zoning standards. And the petitioner has provided an example of drawing or view of what the duplex might look at. The intention is for the duplex to appear mostly like a single-family house from the exterior to blend in with the house to the right. The staff supported the recommendation that we sent to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The staff stated the proposed construction of the duplex will further complement the existing housing stock in the surrounding area, as well as provide more diverse housing types for residents of South Bend. The Board of Zoning Appeals is sending it to you with a favorable recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and I know the petitioner is online as well.
Thank you. Would the petitioner like to make any comments before we go to council?
Hello, everyone. My name is Eric Young. I reside at 2521 Pleasant Street. My family and I moved to the area late last year, to the community. The builder did a wonderful job at building, building our existing home, and one of the key focuses on for me, part of moving in the community, I could have went to any other community, but I decided to go in that community, was that vacant lot. Been able to develop that lot, see something special, and leave it down to my family, my two daughters, and my wife as well. I have a daughter that's three, Lola, and I have another daughter that's one, Capri. So, my plan is to just continue to, continue the tradition there in the, in the area, stay consistent with the existing homes. I hope this project goes well. Looking forward to also having an opportunity to purchase other lots in the area, and working closely with the city and with Mr. Joseph as well to moving forward. So, that's all for me today. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Clerk Jones, is there anyone online? I don't think so.
There is no one online expressing interest to ask questions.
Okay, then at this point, we're gonna go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 106-21?
I don't see anyone virtually, in the virtual public, that is expressing interest in supporting this bill.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 106-21?
There is no one in the virtual public that is wishing to oppose this bill.
Okay, thank you. Then at this point, the public hearing on Bill 106-21 is now closed. If there is no statements from any council members, I'll entertain a motion regarding the bill.
I move to send the bill to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
And I see Councilwoman McBride had a hand up.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to the petitioner, and excited to see further development into the 3rd district. So, I look forward to many more developing opportunities, and would like an opportunity to, to meet. And with that, I will second Councilman Warner's motion.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman McBride. So, we do have a motion on the floor, and it was seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please take the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. We're gonna move to the next bill, which is Bill 109-21. Oh, and the Bill 106-21 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. So, Clerk Jones, could you please give Bill 109-21 a second reading?
Yes. 109-21, Public Hearing on an Alley Vacation, First East West Alley, north of Colfax Avenue, running east from Elm Street for a distance of 255 feet plus or minus to its termination with the First North-South Public Alley, east of Elm Street, South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. And I do have a committee report, being the Chair of the Public Works and Property Vacation Committee. This came out of the committee this afternoon with a favorable recommendation. Is the petitioner present?
Yes, Mike Dance from Dance-Harner and Associates, 1643 Commerce Drive, here in South Bend, representing the city of South Bend. In this request for the alley vacation, as had been mentioned in the committee meeting, what we're asking to do is take, it's approximately a 9.9-foot wide alley that runs east and west, from Elm Street on the west to the LaSalle Connector on the east for 255 feet. We're asking for that to be vacated. What's happening is, is that the city's in the process of creating a new entrance way to the city cemetery. If you've been out there, there have been improvements made along the north side of Colfax between Elm and the LaSalle Connector. This is kind of the last part of that, so that we can vacate the alley and reconfigure the lots that are in that area. The city has put in some planners out there on the east side of Elm Street, and also on the west side of Elm Street, to help that focal point coming up off of Colfax into the city cemetery. And so, what we're trying to do is clean this part up. I will come back and also do a subdivision process to see if there are lots, and then we're also gonna fix a portion of the right-of-way for the LaSalle Connector. And if you have any questions for me on the alley vacation, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Councilwoman McBride or Tomas Morgan? No? Okay. Okay, at this point, then, we're gonna go to the public portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 109-21?
There is no one from the public expressing interest to speak in favor of the Bill 109-21.
Thank you. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition?
There is no one present wishing to speak in opposition.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. At this point, the public hearing on Bill 109-21 is now closed. If there is any statements a council member would like to make, please make them now. Otherwise, I'd like to entertain a motion regarding Bill 109-21.
I move that we send Bill 109-21 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I second.
Okay, the bill has been, a motion made and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Dance. Bill Number 109-21 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to Bill Number 111-21. Clerk Jones, will you please give the bill a second reading?
111-21, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending Ordinance Number 10749-20, which fixed maximum salaries and wages of deputies and employees appointed by the city clerk for calendar year 2021 to delete one full-time position.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. This bill had a hearing in Personnel and Finance earlier today, and comes to you with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Should we consider these two bills, this one and the next one, together?
I was gonna make a motion to have public hearing jointly on Bill 111-21 and 112-21 together.
Well, I second that motion then.
Okay, there has been a motion made to hear bills 111-21 and 112-21 together. Clerk, and it has been a motion and duly seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present then?
I do. Do we need to read one?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Oh, she needs to read the, the, oh, yes, thank you, President White. Clerk Jones, could you please read Bill 112-21?
112-21, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending Ordinance Number 10752-20, which fixed maximum salaries and wages of appointed officers and non-bargaining employees of the city of South Bend for calendar year 2021, to add one new full-time position.
Thank you. And the committee report?
This bill also comes with a favorable recommendation on Personnel and Finance Committee.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. So since we're hearing them together, is the Councilman Warner, do you want to give the presentation?
Yeah, I'll start off with it. So these are, bills are kind of interconnected. As everybody is aware, on August 9th, we amended the Citizen Review Board Bill To Shift the Location of the Director, of the Review Board Office. This bill is kind of a technical step that follows along with that, Amending the 2021 Salary Ordinance, so the ordinance for this existing year. Deleting, 111 deletes the position from the clerk's office, and then 112 adds the position to the administration. Mr. Parker, beyond that, anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you, Chair Warner, and thank you, Council Dan Parker, City Controller. My office is on the 12th floor of the County City Building. As the only thing I would add is that the reason there are two bills is that There's actually two different statutory sections that drive the proposal of positions within the city. So 36, Indiana Code 36473 is the statute that drives the mayor's, the executive branch, and positions, and the mayor proposes those. Whereas Indiana Code 364114 is for the clerk's office employees. So that's why there are two different bills. And both bills would be amended to remove the position from one, the clerk's office, and add it to the other, the executive. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Counsel members, do you have any questions? Is there, I can't. Okay, at this point, I do not see any council members with any questions, so we're going to go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 1121 or Bill 112-21?
There is no one from the public wishing to speak in favor of both these bills.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in oppositions to Bill 1121 or 112-21?
There is no one from the public wishing to speak in opposition of these bills.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. At this point, the public hearing on both of these bills is now closed. If council members wish to make any statements regarding these bills, otherwise I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to send Bill 111-21 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion, and it's been duly seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nuzgaski?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion for Bill number 112-21.
I make a motion to send Bill 112-21 to the council with a favorable recommendation.
I second.
Okay, there's been a motion, and it's been duly seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll for Bill 112-21?
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nuzgaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Bill 112-21 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. At this point, I will entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole And report back to the full council. So moved?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nuzgaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you.
Full council is now back in session. This is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading, and action is taken regarding the bill that was heard during the committee of the whole. We do not have any resolutions before us, so Clerk Jones, will you please give Third reading to Bill 106-21?
106-21, Third Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Approving a Petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals For the Property Located at 2519 Pleasant Street.
Councilwoman Sheila Nuzgaski, is there a recommendation for, from the committee of the whole Regarding Bill 106-21?
Yes, President White. Bill 106-21 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 106-21.
I move for passage.
Second.
There's been a motion, it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nuzgaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you. Clerk Jones, will you please give third reading to Bill 109-21? 109-21, Third Reading on an Alley Vacation, First East West Alley, North of Colfax Avenue, Running East from Elm Street For a Distance of 255 Feet Plus or Minus To Its Termination With the First North-South Public Alley East of Elm Street, South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sheila Nuzgaski, is there a recommendation Coming from the Committee of the Whole Regarding Bill 109-21?
Yes, President White. Bill 109-21 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 109-21.
Move for passage.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nuzgaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Bill 109-21 has passed.
Clerk Jones, will you please give third reading to Bill 111-21?
111-21, Third Reading of an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending Ordinance Number 10749-20, Which Fix Maximum Salaries and Wages of Deputies and Employees Appointed by the City Clerk For Calendar Year 2021, To Delete One Full-Time Position.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sheila Nuzgaski, is there a recommendation From the Committee of the Whole Regarding Bill 111-21?
Yes, President White. Bill 111-21 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Council members, is there a recommendation regarding this bill?
I move for a passage.
I need, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, and it has been seconded as well. Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond and Councilmember Kenneth Lee. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nuzgaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill 111-21 has passed. Clerk Jones, will you please give third reading to Bill 112-21?
112-21, Third Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending Ordinance Number 10752-20, Which Fix Maximum Salaries and Wages of Appointed Officers And Non-Bargaining Employees of the City of South Bend For Calendar Year 2021, To Add One New Full-Time Position.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nuzgaski, is there a recommendation From the Committee of the Whole Regarding Bill 112-21?
Yes, President White. Bill 112-21 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Hold on, entertain a motion.
Move for passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
I second.
Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nuzgaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill 112-21 has passed. We do not have any resolutions. We'll move directly into bills On first reading. Clerk Jones, will you please give a first reading to Bill 113-21?
113-21, First Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Approving a Petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals For the Property Located at 1710 North Turtle Creek Drive.
Would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 113-21 To the South Bend Area Plan Set for October the 4th, 2021, And Sent to the Z and A Committee And Public Hearing Set for October 27th. Is that correct?
Hmm.
October 11th. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Nuzgaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Clerk Jones, will you please give first reading to Bill 114-21?
114-21, First Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council Of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code To Increase Maximum Building Height In the U3 Urban Neighborhood 3, District, Third District, UF Urban Neighborhood, Lex District, NC Neighborhood Center District, and C Commercial District.
I entertain a motion to send this bill to the South Bend Planning Commission Set for October 20th. And, September, I get my numbers off. September 12th?
That should be September 29th. September 20th.
Okay, September the 20th, and then to the Z and Public, Z and And Administration Committee, and set for public hearing for September the 27th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nuzgaski?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Clerk Jones, will you please read, give first reading to Bill 115-21?
Yes. 115-21, First Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council Of the City of South Bend, Indiana, For Budget Transfers For Various Departments Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, For the Year 2021.
Entertain a motion to send this bill to Personnel and Finance And Public Hearing For September the 27th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nuzgaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Will you give first reading to Bill 116-21?
116-21, First Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council Of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Appropriating Additional Funds For Certain Departmental and City Services Operations For the Year 2021, Of $10,925,000 From the General Fund Number 101, $194,373 From the Parks and Recreation Fund Number 201, $920,041 From the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund Number 202, $40,000 From the Law Enforcement Continuing Education Fund Number 220, $235,000 From the Code Enforcement Fund Number 230, $25,293 From the American Rescue Plan Fund Number 263, $484,544 From the COVID-19 Response Fund Number 264, $210,000 From the Fire Department Capital Fund Number 287, $1,798,000 From the Local Income Tax Certified Shares Fund Number 404, $56,500 From the Local Income Tax Economic Development Fund Number 408, And $758,270 From the Solid Waste Capital Fund Number 611.
I'd like to make a motion that Bill 116-21 Go to Personnel Finance Committee for second, third reading on 110821.
Second.
Clerk Jones, will you call the roll?
Vice President McBride?
What's, excuse me, I have a question on the motion. What's the date?
What's the date?
8/2021.
November 8?
That's exactly what I said.
Okay, I just want to make sure, Councilmember Davis, I didn't hear you.
I thought that was supposed to be set for September 27th.
So a motion has been made, it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you call the roll?
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing the correction, I'm not hearing the dates. I'm not hardly hearing what people are saying in the background.
So, Councilmember Davis, will you repeat the motion?
I made a motion that Bill 116-21 Go to Personnel Finance Committee for second and third reading on November 8th, 2021. I got a second, and so she's calling the roll.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Council, Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
No.
Councilmember Wax?
Nay.
Councilmember Nuzgaski?
Nay.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Nay.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President White?
Nay.
Can I ask a point of order? Am I missing something? Am I missing?
No, you're not missing anything. I set the bill out to November 8th, which was the first meeting in November. I didn't set it out for the next council meeting, which is what we're accustomed to doing. I think the bill needs more discussion before we have discussion, before we vote on it. That's why I set it out so far, because there's a lot of money that's involved.
Can I ask a question? Coming out of the committee, what was the date that we had in the, in our council session?
That day was for the next council meeting. We have the privilege of council members of changing the date when the bill can be heard. It does not have to come out of committee the way that you, how it was proposed. That's our privilege. And I took it upon myself.
I understand it, but I'm sorry, I wasn't hearing what, what was going on and was hearing the dates Because it was talking and stuff going on, so I wasn't sure what was happening. That's, I'm just trying to find out clarification Of what just happened.
So you're clear now?
Well, yes, so, I guess we'll continue on with what the vote is, But I didn't know that that was the date that was out there, but.
So there are five nays and four ayes. Now I'd like to entertain a motion to send this bill to Personnel and Finance For Committee and Public Hearing For September the 27th.
So move for September the 27th.
And I'll second.
Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Nuzgaski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Nay.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Clerk Jones, would you please give first reading to bill one-seventeen dash twenty-one?
One-seventeen twenty-one, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating, adopting, and approving the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation's two thousand and twenty-two budget and levying the tax and fixing the rate of the taxation for the purpose of raising revenue to fund the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation, South Bend, Indiana, for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
We'd like to entertain a motion to send this bill to Personnel and Finance set for September the twenty-seventh, council and second reading for September the twenty-seventh, and third reading set for October the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved.
Second. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Council, Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Nuzgaski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Would you please give first reading to bill one-eighteen dash twenty-one?
One-eighteen twenty-one, first reading on an ordinance of the common councils of the city of South Bend, Indiana, levying taxes and fixing the rate of taxation for the purpose of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the civil city of South Bend for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, and appropriating monies for the purpose of defraying the expenses of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-two, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, including all outstanding claims and obligations, and fixing a time when the same shall take effect.
We'd like to entertain a motion to send this bill to Personnel and Finance set for September the twenty-seventh for council and second reading for September the twenty-seventh, third reading on October the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Nuzgaski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. We'll now move to, is there any unfinished business, councilmembers?
Yes.
unfinished, Councilmember Davis?
Yes, uh, you sent out an email, um, that read out earlier today. Uh, I don't know if it came out today or the day before, but it was, uh, Bob Palmer, our attorney, said that it was fine that council meet, have the discussion about whatever had, uh, whatever the agenda item is. I guess we don't need an executive session to do that, is what I gathered from the email, so I'm asking if or when is that ever going to happen?
I do plan to get with Attorney Palmer and schedule that time for us to have that discussion.
I think it's more valuable, uh, if we have it prior to the next budget hearing.
I'll do my best, I promise that with everyone's schedule, uh, because the next budget, uh, is Friday.
Yeah.
So I'll do my best to get everyone, you know, I sent out an email. I just received, uh, Mr. Palmer's response to the email that I sent out on Saturday, and so I will, you know, tonight send an email and to get the schedules from the council members to see what their availability is.
Sure.
Thank you. Or is there any other unfinished business, councilmembers? Councilwoman McBride or Councilwoman, uh, Rachel Tomas Morgan? Okay, is there any new business? Councilmembers, any new business? We'll now go to the privilege of the floor.
President White, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I would just like, uh, expound a little bit further that, uh, for National Day of Remembrance for, uh, murder victims. Uh, again, that program is going to be on Saturday the twenty-fifth, and, uh, we're also trying to work to put together, um, I scheduled for a, a live broadcast at WUBS for Tuesday, September the twenty-first at noon, so if any council member would like to be a part of that broadcast, please let me know. And also, we're going to also be doing a commercial spot with WSBT, like we did for the council's, um, uh, initiatives we had previously, um, to let the community know about the national holiday and inviting them to come and be a part of, so the community as a whole is informed, because it's impossible to contact all one-hundred-and-something families because a lot of them have moved or have disconnected numbers, so we want to make sure that we get the word out so people can come to be a part of, but I encourage uh, my colleagues to also be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, could you send that, those dates to the council members so that we can have those?
Okay.
The date, the time, and the location?
Yes.
Thank you so much, appreciate that. Is there any other new business? Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak on the privilege of the floor? Yes, would you please come to poll him and state your name, please?
Good evening. My name is Larry Clifford. I live at seven-oh-nine East Washington in the city of South Bend. Some of you may know me as the originator and chief organizer of the Resurrect the Roses Project in Leaper Park. This is an all-volunteer group that took a dead and dying rose garden at Leaper, Leaper Park and recreated it as a flourishing botanical garden, which is now, in my opinion, the nicest garden in the city of South Bend. When we started the project seven years ago, that rose garden had nearly died out because of the negligence and incompetence of the former park department. Now it thrives, and without a dime of contribution from the city. But I'm not here this evening to talk about the rose garden. As I'm sure you're all aware, a young man was murdered in my neighborhood the other night, Saturday night, early Sunday morning. There have been problems in this neighborhood with drunken and disorderly college students, Notre Dame students, and Holy Cross students for many years, and the city has been negligent in doing anything about it. I'm here this evening on behalf of myself and a large number of my neighbors who have asked me to come this evening and express our disgust at the incompetence of the various institutions of the city to do anything about this. The murder occurred at approximately three forty-five AM at a large drunken party of Notre Dame and Holy Cross students. Frankly, who the hell is out drinking in the streets at three forty-five AM on a Sunday morning? How is it possible that hundreds of drunken Notre Dame and Holy Cross students are partying loudly and openly at three forty-five AM in my neighborhood without any of you doing anything about it? The answer to my question is that these things occur in what are otherwise quiet residential neighborhoods because of the negligence and incompetence of the city and of the University of Notre Dame. Thirty seconds, sir. Who is negligent? The University of Notre Dame is negligent. In addition, the management of the South Bend Police Department is negligent, and also, in my opinion, incredibly incompetent and amateurish. The chief police and his, the chief of police and his cronies oversee a department that has an annual budget of nearly a hundred million dollars a year. That means in the last ten years, they've had a budget of a billion dollars. In the last ten years, have we gotten a billion dollars? With a protect and serve? I would say not. And in the meantime, unfortunately, in the meantime, unfortunately...
Your minutes have passed at this time.
I would ask that that be extended, if you would please.
No, at this time, we're going to stick to, um, each, you know, individuals have three minutes.
All right, well, it's outrageous. Several years ago, a member of this council...
We're going to ask you to bring your comments to a close.
I'm bringing it to a close.
Submit those to us in writing.
I will do that. I, I have in fact mailed each and every one of you at your city council addresses a copy of these comments. Several years ago, a member of the city council proposed an ordinance...
Mr. Clifford, we're going to ask that you bring your comments to a close.
I'm bringing it to a close, ma'am. I appreciate it. Several years ago, a member of your council proposed an ordinance limiting the number of students in residential neighborhood parties. That ordinance was overridden by the University of Notre Dame. They actually took actions to remove that member from the city council because they didn't want to go along with it. They have these drunken, disorderly students on their campus, and they can't take care of it, and so they send them into the community, into our neighborhoods, into your neighborhoods that you're responsible for. I would ask that the city council reinvigorate that old ordinance and pass it. I would ask that the, uh, city council recognize that we have two separate, I'm almost finished, ma'am.
I, I have to admit, sure that you hear to the guidelines that we have. I appreciate your, you know, your comments, but each, uh, person speaking on the privilege of the floor has three minutes.
I appreciate that, and I'll finish. The city council has, the city has two separate ordinances for noise violation.
Three and a quarter, sir. Every single person that comes before us gets three minutes.
Really? You don't have another minute to listen to your neighbors and your neighborhoods? You don't have enough?
Mr. Clifford, we have given you more than three minutes.
You can cut off my mic. You can't cut off my voice. You will be heard on this.
Thank you.
Confidence, police department, and the city council be silent.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford. We appreciate that.
To take me away. You guys are...
No, we have not asked that to happen. We're just asking, Mr. Clifford, we're just asking you to bring your comments to a close.
I brought them to a close only after being bothered to do that.
Well, no, we asked you to hear to the guidelines, three minutes. We appreciate you. Okay, thank you.
Ignore me. You're one of the residents of my neighborhood. You ignore our neighborhoods.
Clerk Jones, is anyone else wishing to speak on the privilege of the floor?
There is no one else, um, that is expressing interest to speak on privilege of the floor.
If not, this meeting stands adjourned. Yes, yes, that's why, yeah. That's not clear.